Welcome to the January 11th, 2024 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Nusseil.
Ms. Kohar.
Here.
Ms. Kerbeck.
Here.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Here.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is, sir.
Can you please monitor livestreaming throughout the meeting and if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Right now, we'll turn it over to you for what would normally be Parma proud?
Yes, so each week or each meeting, we have a presentation from schools where this year they are really focused on their most resilient students. However, tonight, we have actually moved that back into a later meeting, but we do have our state representative, Mr. Sean Brennan, here this evening for a brief presentation to our board members.
Thank you very -- can you hear me?
Hmm.
Oh, good. Thank you very much, and I want to say thank you to President Ruda for allowing me to speak tonight and the rest of you on the board as well and Dr. Smiley. I want to first of all say that today I visited two schools in the Parma City School District. That was Valley Forge, and that's where I did my student teaching 30 years ago. So it was kind of nostalgic to go back, although I've been back several times, but it was just particularly nostalgic today. Principal Andruski is just phenomenal. We talked for about 45 minutes. She gave me unannounced 45 minutes of her time today, and we had some really good talks about public education and her vision for her school and the students that she serves there. And I gave her certificates for the high marks on the state report card. So kudos to Valley Forge and the principal and a whole staff and students over there. I also visited Parma Pleasant Valley Elementary and talked to Mrs. Boca, the principal over there. What a warm school. I mean, you walk into that school and you can just feel it when you walk in, and you can just tell that the adults in that building really care about the students that are under their care. And again, she took about a half hour and spoke to me about her vision. I visited a kindergarten classroom in there, and I said to the teacher, who's a brand-new teacher whom you hired last at the beginning of this school year, that although I taught middle school and high school for 30 years, I may have missed my calling because those kindergarten kids are so sweet. They still love their teachers, and they were waving at me and saying hello, and it was really, really amazing. So kudos to the principal and staff over at Pleasant Valley Elementary. The reason I'm here tonight is because this is School Board Appreciation Month, and I didn't know that was a thing until I got an email about a week ago. It was actually the day that you were all sworn in, and I just wanted to come up and on behalf of myself and the folks that I represent here in District 14 and say how much I do appreciate what you do. You've probably all heard me say that people have asked me over the years whether or not I would consider running for school board, and I've literally told them it would be literally the last thing I would do because I know it's a very, very difficult job, and you take a lot of lumps as a school board member. And I personally don't think that's fair because it's a very, very difficult job, and I know the people, I know many of the people have done it before you, and now, of course, I know all of you, and I know, I can't say that there's one member of the school board that I've met over the years that did not care about kids. And that, to me, is the number-one qualification to be a school board member, is that you love kids. I'm in a lot of conversations now at the State House about education. I serve on the Primary and Secondary Education Committee, and one of the things that concerns me is in a lot of the conversations I have about policy regarding public schools in Ohio is guess what's left out of the equation in many of those conversations I have?
The kids.
Children. It's always about the adults. That's not why we're here, and I know all of you know that because I've met with every single one of you recently, and I really appreciate the time you took with me. I want to say welcome to our three new school board members. Congratulations to our new president and our new vice president, and Godspeed to all of you. As I always say, to all of you and to the principals and other leaders and teachers in the district, I want to be your cheerleader. I was a public educator for 30 years. I cared deeply, although I did not attend the Parma schools. I wouldn't be where I am today if it weren't for the Parma Public Schools because I did do my student teaching at Valley Forge, and that was a very formative time in my life. And God rest the soul of Ray Shaker, whom some of you probably know, who is one of my cooperating teachers, and Gail Daly, who I'm not sure if she's still around or not. I hope she is. They did a phenomenal job, and I learned a lot from them, and I owe a lot to the Parma City Schools in large part because of that. So thank you for your service. I provided you each with a commendation from the Ohio House of Representatives. I also included a letter in there that explains that the state has a program where you can create a license plate for your school district. You've seen them probably before with the Lake Erie emblem. Some colleges and universities have them as well, but you can also do them for your school district. So I would invite you to work with me if you're interested. I'd be glad to get the legislation going and help get that project going. The part of the proceeds from those that get the license plate can go to a charity of your choice. So if you wanted to go to the Schools Foundation or one of the boosters groups or something, you could do that. So I put a letter in there with all the information about it. Feel free to let me know if you're interested. I also included a copy of the scholarship application for the City of Parma Scholarship, which I'm very proud to say helped found about 13 years ago with our former mayor, Tim DeGeeter, and a few other folks in town. That's open to any Parma student. One of the downsides of it, we usually don't have many students that apply for it, so please encourage our seniors who live in Parma to apply for the scholarship. We usually give out four scholarships, $1,500 apiece. We're lucky if we get 20 to 25 kids every year that apply for it, so they have a really good chance of getting it. I've dropped off hard copies at all the schools in Parma, all the high schools, that is. You can also download a copy of it from the City of Parma website, and if you need more, just let me know. All right? So thanks again. I appreciate the time you gave me. It's an honor to serve, and Godspeed, and have a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still with Dr. Smiley, information?
Yes, I appreciate Mr. Brennan's presentation. Thank you very much for your kind comments, and I know that Mr. Brennan is a steadfast proponent of public education and has really been a very influential partner in all that we do in the school district. So thank you very much for your remarks tonight. At this point, we're going to have a brief presentation from our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Amy Cruz, and she is here to highlight some of the changes, or I should say really all of the changes that we will have in our course registration manual. This is an exciting time for both middle school and high school students. We look forward to building schedules for them that will guide their learning processes next year, and we have some changes to present to the board this evening as a later agenda item will ask you to approve the course registration manual. Dr. Cruz?
Thank you. Hi, good evening. You should have very nice folders there that I will reference during the presentation. You also have a hard copy of the slides. You also have a hard copy of the slides in the folder as well. So we always start with our district goals. It is important for us to align our work with these goals, and the registration guides showcase the variety of options that are available to our students to promote student This slide shows the overview of our timeline. So many people have contributed to this work to get us where we are today. At our initial department chairs meeting in October, we analyzed data, we considered instructional areas of focus, and we outlined priorities for, and they outlined priorities for their departments. The department chairs from each building worked together to investigate their current course offerings and the enrollment trends, and they also shared specific feedback regarding course changes. Our department reviewed their feedback with other administrators, building principals, and we followed up with some additional meetings with teachers and department chairs. We wanted to really make sure that we were considering the implications of these proposed changes. Then at our December department chair meeting, we presented a draft, and the teachers and administrators had an opportunity to revise and edit the course guides. So they had some fun with their red pens, and they worked, we worked through those necessary changes and edits, and we're here tonight to present this to you for your consideration and approval. So as I said, there were many people who helped with this endeavor, including our principals, our counselors, our department chairs, and many folks across different departments. So special thanks to all of them, as well as to our, I need to also commend our department secretaries who were quite, worked quite hard to put together the guides and all the edits and all the hard work that goes with that and helping with getting us here tonight with your folders as well. So looking at middle school, so in your folder on the left side, you have the Middle School Registration Guide, and the pages are tabbed for you, so it'll take you directly to that updated information. The first item to highlight is our Project Lead the Way elective courses. And the rollout of these Project Lead the Way courses allow our students to experience a different course each year as they move through middle school. So currently, this year, our students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are taking medical technology, and our proposal for the next year shows how we added design and modeling, and then the following year, we added the automation, or we will add the automation and robotics. So it allows for our students to experience a different elective course each year. The next item to highlight is our addition of honors ELA and math for our fifth grade, and that's on pages six and seven. So to provide opportunities for our high-achieving students, we're adding this ELA and math honors courses to our fifth grade options. Will allow our students to engage in standards at a greater depth with tasks that extend their learning and promote a greater level of understanding and engagement. Additionally, due to scheduling being different at the middle school than at high school, we decided to embed the social studies honors course into the core course so that the differentiation will then happen within that core social studies course, and many of those research strategies and those writing practices will also happen in their ELA courses where they can be enriched and extended. So that's middle school. Moving on to high school. In your folder on the right side, you'll see the High School Course Guide. The first change is that we are adding, proposing to add Applied Algebra I. This is on page 54. So we know that students have gaps in their skills. They need more exposure to these concepts, and we want them to be successful in Algebra I. We've had several conversations with math teachers, with the department chairs and administrators. We've investigated a lot of different ways to increase students' achievement, and we wanted to pursue this option, one that is recommended by the Ohio Department of Education, and it's where students can take a math support class in addition to a regular math class, and then credit is awarded for both of those classes, so they take them concurrently. The goal of this Applied Algebra course is to help keep up with that pace and the rigor of the regular class, but the course is designed to be a little bit more hands-on, a little more real-world connections to help promote that engagement, and giving them that foundational knowledge in Algebra I will help them to be successful in future high school courses. Sticking with the math department, one other change is to move from the course being an honors pre-calc course to an advanced placement or an AP pre-calc, and that is, our teachers were investigating the expectations of the AP pre-calc class, and it was very much in line with what they were already doing in the honors pre-calc. So we decided to make that shift to the AP offering. This will allow our students to earn that college credit, and it really shows their commitment to wanting to take those rigorous courses. And the, we still have two more. There were changes there for the art courses, and this is aligned to their standards. So the art standards changed back in 2022, so the art department created this vision, realigned their vision to align with the standards, but also to align to this pathway of these visual product and media. And the visual pathway has like drawing and painting and digital mediums. The product is that 3D, the arts, the ceramics and crafts, and media is the traditional and also digital photography. So their courses now align with those three pathways. And then finally, there were some adjustments to our AP exam, some of the language in the registration guide. It is our expectation that when students take an AP course, that they take the AP exam that aligns with that course. That is in line with what the College Board recommends, and the additional piece to this is that we are streamlining the process where students register for their AP exams, and we are going to be using title funds to help offset the cost for these. So they'll be given, the fees will be at a reduced cost, so that will allow them to use more their typical way of how they pay for their own student fees with the Home Access Center. They'll be able to do that, whereas before, it's been an additional process and additional cost associated with that. So next year, we're hoping to streamline that and then offset the cost for our students. We wouldn't want that to be a barrier to them taking these courses. So next steps, the teachers and students will make their course requests, and the counselors will work with the students to complete their registration. Then we jump into staffing, and finally, that curriculum writing and professional development help with some of that training for these new course offerings. So this is a very high-level summary that you're seeing here. There's certainly a lot of work that goes into these next few months of getting the students all registered for these courses and the scheduling and the staffing, but our teachers and our counselors are going to work with students, have a lot of conversations and discussions so that our students can work with their families to register for the courses that are the best fit for them. Any questions?
Can I make a few comments?
Please.
Just to accent a few things. First, thank you for all of the work on this. As the board can see, it's really a year-long process essentially. You know, we get students into the right courses in the fall, and then as soon as they're in those courses, we start thinking about the following year, and I think you're getting a flavor of how intensive that can be. Second, I really want to emphasize the change in sort of an AP mindset. I think it's, we can all think back to our perception of AP courses. I know I took some AP courses, had no intent on ever taking the actual exam, and quite honestly, that influenced, you know, my effort in the class. And so what you've heard Dr. Cruz outline tonight is, you know, the mindset that, no, we are going to take the test. There's some cost to the family, and we think there should be because I think that helps the buy-in, but the district is also going to offset that with Title IV funds. And so yes, that money is in our budget already. That is not an increase. It's just a different way of allocating that funding. So I thank you for your work on this. Again, it is extensive. A lot of steps go into this with an awful lot of input to come to the point that we are at tonight.
Yeah, thank you there. I mean, I know you guys do a lot of work on this, and I'm really excited about the algebra because I know there's a problem in the ninth grade, so it's nice to see that, you know, as soon as we're realizing it, we're addressing it. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you again. It was beautiful, but I just wanted to mention the color coding. Cindy really trained you guys really well. Every committee meeting we have, we have a color code, so it's easy for us to follow. I appreciate it. So, no, very good. I know it's a lot of work to do to put this together, so thank you.
You're welcome. It's certainly a collaborative effort. Lot of hands in these two guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cruz.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we'll move on to communications. Mr. Nusseil?
Yes, I have Ryan Pendleton from the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio to speak about school funding. There is a handout I gave to everybody following.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, from instruction now to a little bit about finance. So school finance in Ohio public schools is often studied and misunderstood background in how we fund it. So I'm here to give you a quick overview about school funding in Ohio and a little bit more about Parma City Schools, and can answer any questions, but think of this as school finance 101, and your treasurer CFO will take you through the next steps, or we can support you in any way. My name's Ryan Pendleton. I'm a 20-year school treasurer at two different districts. I most recently left Akron Public Schools before becoming an employee of the Educational Service Center, of which you're a member of, and we support you and many districts here in northeastern Ohio region. Quick agenda, how schools are funded tonight, public education as a shared responsibility, and then ultimately, your role and responsibility in engaging the staff and community in understanding how we fund schools. When you look at school budgets and you learn about school funding in Ohio, the tiles up there are really what we see daily and what you hear about. What often looks in budget reports and the detailed reports gets lost. So at a high level, we have state funding, local funding, the important balance between those two, federal funding, which helps us supplement our programs, tuition and fees or competitive grants, which obviously supports instruction, instructional-related supports, and any voter-approved initiatives. And obviously, in Ohio, we're no stranger to school referendum or school levy. For those of you who want to take a deep dive, Sean has a copy of this, and linked in this PowerPoint is the Department of Education Workforce School Funding Overview. So it's a detailed, me and you'll take you through a lot more detail than what I'll give you tonight. I put this slide up here in our presentations just to remind us as community members, taxpayers, that in Ohio, for a very long time, the last time that it was in writing was 1854, that school funding in Ohio is a shared responsibility. It's a shared responsibility between the state and the public, and we often do this a lot. And one of the slides you'll see coming up, and we'll go to the next slide, is that is where we have pointed fingers in the past, right? We all have heard that the constitutionality of school funding in Ohio has been challenged, and we've had four court cases, 25, 30 years now of court cases, and we haven't done a lot since then. However, we had a new initiative led by Representative then Bob Kupp and John Patterson about five years ago called the Fair School Funding Plan. And if you go to the next slide, next, okay. So this is what I'd love for you to take away tonight about three important steps in school funding, and that is base cost. And it answers the question, what does every child and student need as far as cost to fund their education? Two, the part that we get wrong, and it's very complicated, is the state and local share. What is the state's responsibility and what is the local, and how does that equation work? And we'll talk a little bit about that equation. And then three is what above and beyond does a typical child need to fund their education? Special education, gifted, transportation, economically disadvantaged, what are those categoricals above and beyond? Next slide. So base cost. It is answering the question that we've gotten wrong for decades. Now, in the Fair School Funding Plan in law, we argue that it is a constitutional framework. It is in the second biennium of phase in. We have one more biennium phase in, and we have a constitutional framework. So what does it cost to educate every child today? And then what does every district need today to operate? The way that we funded and created this was think about from the time that a student boards a bus in the morning till the time that they log off on night. We looked at the spending trends of every school district, all 609 of us, and that's what came up with the basics of that formula. Next slide. The second step, state and local share. This is the part that we've gotten wrong in Ohio. It's the most confusing. So let me start by the definition of wealth, and then this is the part that I think will resonate with you through your future discussions, your future levy discussions, is the definition of wealth in Ohio is the amount of property that you have in your community divided by the number of kids. That has been the definition of wealth in Ohio since we primarily fund schools through local property tax. Now, we've gotten it wrong in Ohio for many years. I would argue that now we have a constitutional framework, there's less of a burden on local taxpayers, there's less frequency in levies. We'll talk through that a little bit. The one thing that the formula left out in the state and local partnership was income. That is a community's ability to participate in the equation. And so for so long, there's been communities that have been property-rich. You are property-rich. So think about your history. Think about northeastern Ohio's history. Think about the Industrial Revolution that it hinges on, and Ohio unfortunately is a declining enrollment state. We lose about 1% to 1.5% enrollment per year. In Akron, the infrastructure in Akron, when I left, we could have educated 50,000 kids not that long ago. We have 20,000 kids in seat. So if you think about that infrastructure, but there's still all that property, commercial, industrial, tangible, and residential, that is potentially being taxed, and that's what makes a district fairly wealthy. In Parma's case, because we haven't looked at the formula in terms of median income added to this formula, which is now there, you are very wealthy in the state's eyes. In fact, you're in the top 50 in the state of Ohio. That doesn't compute sometimes. In fact, I was having a similar conversation this morning with South Yucatlinhurst, very wealthy district also, declining enrollment. How your enrollment has stabilized a little bit when we were looking at the charts. And then choice, we're going to look at some of the choice offerings too, as community members have choice and how the formula recognizes that. Next slide. The third step, so if you remember, base cost is first step. The second step is the state and local share, and then the third step in our new formula is categorical. So as you begin to look through finance reports and talk through those things, you'll see DPIA, which is previously referred to as economically disadvantaged, you know, preschool components, special education, economically disadvantaged, transportation, and if we don't get those formulas right, it takes resources out of the classroom. So one of the examples I'll give you is, I was in Columbus yesterday, and one of the attendees at a seminar that we were speaking at was Switzerland of Ohio. Switzerland of Ohio is in southeastern Ohio. When we started this process, Switzerland of Ohio was one of the, quote, poorest districts in the state of Ohio. In less than five years, they became one of the wealthiest districts in the state of Ohio, and that was because of pipeline values. But what's interesting is they have 500 square miles, and their transportation budget was millions, and because we didn't get the categorical part of the formula right, we're taking resources out of the classroom. So step one, base cost, what does every child need, what does every district need today to operate? Step two is the state and local share, now that we've gotten that right, and then step three is categorical. The rest of the presentation's a little bit more about you, and this is through the Department of Education Workforce website. I encourage you to go under the Finance section, and there's lots of interactive graphs now that are backed by a software called Tableau, so you can really get into the details about enrollment. There's your enrollment for the past few years. Next slide. Next slide. This is a chart I love to share with districts because it frames your enrollment and your choice options well for you as decision-makers and your community for understanding where some of our dollars in finances are going. This is, the blue part of this line graph is the number of births relative to those who are born in the Parma City Schools' boundaries and those who retain and stay in the district. Okay? So, as you look at live birth rates, this is census data. You see back in 2012, there were 419 students born into the Parma City School Districts, and in that same year, if I can see that number correctly, 282?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two? 282. So, we just put that in terms of a ratio of, what, 67%? And as you follow that ratio across, this is a great slide for understanding what that might be.
Is that information, was that South Euclid-Linhurst that's up there?
Is that South Euclid-Linhurst? Oh, I didn't change that slide. Like I said, I did this for South Euclid-Linhurst this morning. I'll drop the new slide to you as soon as I leave.
Okay.
And I encourage you to go back and look at this ratio because what this identifies is choice options for the district, which are no longer a transfer and deduct that Sean can explain to you in future, but it allows you to identify students that have otherwise, might be taking Ed Choice, Ed Choice voucher, voucher expansion, homeschool, charter, and community, and it gives you a great perspective of where your enrollment might be. I apologize for that slide. Hopefully, I got the rest of those slides right. Let's go to the next one. Okay. These next two slides are the last two, and that wraps up the presentation, but this is the detail about the payment reports for your district. This shows that your local capacity there, where you see under the per pupil amounts and state share percentage, it shows that your local capacity of that $8,000 base cost that I talked about, that it is saying, the formula says, you can carry $6,000 per pupil of that cost. And if you go to the next slide, it gives you all those factors. I know it's a lot of numbers, but that was the only spreadsheet I put up there. It shows you all those factors that are used in this calculation. Shows you median income, and it shows you about middle of the page, the statewide federal median income is about $45,000 and change. You're just under that. So, now it's using that income factor to better balance your community's ability to participate in the finances. So, I'll wrap up there. That was as quick as I could get through school finance and not bog down your board meeting. So, open it up for any questions that you might have, and I'll make sure to correct that slide later tonight.
I have a question, and actually, for the board and for the public. This is actually sort of first of a two-part series. The second will be, you know, sort of a deep dive into our own finances here in Parma, and some of the questions that we know are out there in the community, and we want to answer those. We want a very detailed look at what exactly, you know, how we've spent and how we've secured outside funding, what we've done with Esser money, all of those, you know, questions will be at the 25th. And so, potentially, this is something we would answer, but since you're here and you might have some expertise in the area, when we get a reimbursement from the state for transportation costs for private school students, is that a flat fee, or do we submit data to make sure that? In other words, Cuyahoga County is always going to have a higher labor cost than anybody else in the state. You know, when the state sends us back money, is that accounting for what we actually spend, or is there just a flat reimbursement rate?
Simply put, it never reimburses what your total costs are.
Thank you.
It never reimburses what your total costs are. There is transportation reports that we're required to fill out, ridership ratios, what your enrollment is, and sometimes this confusing message that your community may see that we're required to transport sometimes more non-Parma City School District kiddos than our own. And that's just because of the way the law is written. So, your community members may see a bus that may not be full, but we're required to transport within certain parameters, guidelines, timeframes, and those choice options. And so, it, the formula does not reimburse 100%. There's no question about it.
How about special education costs? Would that be the same?
There's two parts of the formula that you'll see through the General Assembly and your representative that was here tonight, and some studies that we've had commissioned in this conversation. There's two parts of categorical funding that have a major drain on resources. And what I mean by drain is they're not properly funded so that we have to take the funds from elsewhere, like in the Switzerland of Ohio part where they have to use the transportation budget and that pulls out of the classroom. One is special ed. There's no doubt that it impacts every student's education when we don't properly fund special ed. And the second is transportation. Those are the two biggest resource draws away from classrooms.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I had two questions. DPIA, the, you know, economically disadvantaged, the money that the state gives us back, is that a flat number across, you know, the Cuyahoga County, or does it vary by the district that they reimburse? Because when I've gone with Sean over some of these numbers, it seems like some places are getting up to like $1,200 or $1,300 per DPIA child, where we're only getting between $400 and $600 per economically disadvantaged child. So, is that part of that formula? Is that why there's a disparity between some districts and others on how much they're getting per child on that?
That might be part two of this conversation, and the payment reports that are up online here also have all the detail in economically disadvantaged or DPIA. It is not a flat fee per district. It's based on a weighted formula in what's called your direct cert or your economically disadvantaged percentage. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm sure we can get that.
No, that's fine. That answers the question. My second, I don't know, you didn't really touch on this, but I was just curious about, like, the Homestead Act. You know, people get that and they get a break on their taxes. We get some kind of reimbursement from the state for that tax break, correct?
You do. You get a Homestead and rollback.
Yeah. So, what happens when we pass a new levy to those people that are on that, that have the Homestead rollback? They lose part of that?
They do on new, and it depends on the kind of operating levy that you're going to look at, and I would defer to your treasurer.
Okay. I'm sorry. That takes me to my next point. The state just expanded the Homestead Act.
Yes.
So, would it be safe to say that there's a real possibility that with the expansion of the Homestead Act, that a new levy wouldn't necessarily be a net, you know, they wouldn't, they'd be paying the same amount of money because of the expansion? So, if we, because I know in the past, a lot of people were hesitant because they didn't want to lose their rollback, so even though they might have wanted to support the schools, they couldn't because they were afraid they were going to have to pay more in taxes that they couldn't afford. But since the state expanded the Homestead Act, we would be able to at least somewhat make the case that that's not going to be the case this time? It'll offset between the expansion and the?
I think there's a lot of factors that go into that, but it's a possibility in terms of renewal or new, right? If you have an existing or a new operating levy, and the type and amount of millage that you do, or whether it's what's called a fixed sum or a fixed rate. So, fixed sum is commonly referred to as an emergency levy, so it sets a dollar amount, and then it backs into the millage. So, there's some complicating factors, and I'm sure you're going to explore all those.
We would do emergency if we, new levy would be emergency.
Emergency. So, I'm sure your treasurer, Sean, would have that, those details.
Okay. I'm just trying, if the expansion of it would help minimize what they would have normally lost in the past because, you know, if we were to pass a levy. We're trying to find a way to get people to, you know, support the schools without, you know, choosing between medicine and voting for a levy.
Absolutely.
And I'm hoping that the expansion of the Homestead Act could actually help us make that case. That was my question. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At the risk of sounding ignorant, could you elaborate on the expansion of the Homestead?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand that that.
They went from, what, 35 to 50, right? I'm trying to think exactly how they, the first 35,000.
Even as recent as yesterday, there is tax reform committees meeting in the General Assembly. I would anticipate this year, there's going to be passed legislation in tax reform, and you've been hearing maybe some of the communities around Ohio that are going through reappraisal and pretty big numbers on reappraisal. So, tax bills are going out, people are paying a lot of attention to it. The Homestead expansion is through 187. It was passed. I don't know exactly how it impacts your voters, which is why I'm kind of staying silent on it, because I don't know.
Well, I believe it went from not taxing, what, the first 35,000 to now up to 50,000, and they expanded the income requirement so that it could capture more people because the, the income that you needed in order to qualify was so low, they expanded that so that more people could qualify for it. And like I said, I'm pretty sure it was, first 35,000 wasn't taxed, now it's up to the first 50,000. So, that's what that was.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton.
All right. Well, at this point, we open the meeting to, public to address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have anything? Nothing? All right. We have no amendments or resolutions, which takes us to Record of Proceeding. I move to adopt Resolution 2020, no, yeah, 2024-01-09, Approval of the Written Records of Proceedings from the January 4, 2024 Organizational Meeting.
Second.
Second.
No.
That should be second by Mr. McTaggart.
Yeah. It should be second by Mr. Taggart. That's all he said.
Oh, it has to be by the Vice President. I'm sorry.
That's fine. We have a motion, a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? None? Roll call.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-01-09 has been approved. Move to business of the board. Resolution, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-10 to amend Resolution 2024-01-05, 2024 Committee Meeting Dates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a comment. In case anybody has no, when we approved the committee meeting dates, we accidentally approved last year's dates, so this is just amending it to be 2024 calendar dates.
Gee.
So, that's it.
For all of them?
Yeah. The whole thing was all 2023.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
No, it was just the finance.
Was it just the finance?
It was just the finance.
Okay, it was just the finance was 2023.
The other ones were all correct.
I was going to say, my other ones are on my calendar, so I have to go back to work. Okay.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Nusso.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-01-10 has been approved. This takes us to Curriculum. Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-11, Approval of the 2024-2025 High School Course Guide.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-11. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-12, Approval of the 2024-2025 Middle School Course Guide.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-12. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-12 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-13, Approval of the Overnight and Out-of-State Field Trips to Nashville, Tennessee, and Lexington, Kentucky on January 27, oh, I'm sorry, January 17 and 20 of 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution 2024-01-13. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-13 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-14, Authorization to Purchase Additional Health Education Curriculum, Second Step Child Protection Unit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-14. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yep.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Because it is state-mandated, correct? Yes.
Yes. The content is state-mandated. This is simply a resource that is helping us to meet a state law.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-14 has been approved.
Unless anybody else has anything to discuss on curriculum, this concludes curriculum tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. We have nothing in business today. This takes us to Finance.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-15, Radication of Investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-15. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-15 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-16, Approval of Supplemental Appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-16. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-16 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-17, Requesting Advance Payment from Funds from the County Treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-17. Any comments or questions from the board?
Can I speak on this, Mr. Ruda?
Absolutely.
So, this is not asking for a loan from the county. What this is saying is mortgage companies sometimes pay their property taxes ahead of time before the due date, which is the 15th of February, and some people print their bill and pay it anyways. So, the county's collected property taxes for us. They're holding onto it and getting interest, and I'm saying, give the money to us. I want to get the interest. I don't want you guys to get the interest. So, that's what this resolution is. It's authorizing them to send us the property taxes that they've collected.
Thank you.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-17 has been approved.
Unless anyone else.
Sorry. I was just, no, nothing. Go ahead.
Unless anyone else has anything to discuss on finances, we'll conclude finance this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Most welcome.
This moves us on to legislation. Anything to discuss from OSB?
We have nothing.
Okay. That will take us to human resources, Mrs. Taggart, Mrs. McTaggart.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-18, approval of the following certified exhibits, confirmation of stipend appointments, confirmation of supplemental appointments, approval of certified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-18. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes.
Resolution 2024-01-18 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-19, acceptance of certified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-19. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-19 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-20, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments, replacements, acceptance of classified resignations, confirmation of classified changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-20. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-20 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-21, acceptance classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01-21. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mrs. Kerpek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes. Resolution 2024-01-21 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01-22, creation of administrative specialist for student transportation and quality control and adoption of job description.
Second.